Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 11th, 2022, back to order. We started tonight's meeting at 5:30 for some interviews. We went into executive session at 6:07 to discuss collective bargaining for all town unions. No decisions have been made yet. We will reconvene after this meeting executive session. So we recessed executive session, returning to open session, and we will go back into executive session at the end of this. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment announcement.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jay Coburn, the CEO of the Community Development Partnership.
And Hadley Luddy, the CEO of the Homeless Prevention Council.
And we wanted to just take a little bit of your, convenience of your time to make an announcement. Thanks to the efforts of our state representative, Sarah Peak, our two organizations were able to secure a million dollars in ARPA funds from the American Rescue Act to launch, to help solve some of the short-term housing needs for the eight Lower Cape towns. And so we're here tonight to announce the creation of the Lower Cape Housing and ADU Resource Center, which is a joint project of the Homeless Prevention Council and the Community Development Partnership. The project, over the next three years, has a number of different components. The first one that we'll be focusing on at the CDP is what we call the BRICS component, and that is to provide support for homeowners to create accessory dwelling units. Here in the town of Harwich, as you know, you've made major strides in reforming the ADU zoning bylaw to make it easier. And so now we're planning to come in and help with financial incentives, technical assistance, and other resources to eligible homeowners so that they can convert that space above their garage, or a basement, or part of their home into an accessory dwelling unit. You want to talk about the other components?
Sure. The other piece of this program that we're excited about is that there's a real people focus, so that once housing is developed and created, we will find some ways to additionally support residents and landlords as they both develop and maintain housing. So that will happen through a housing stability fund for residents who are not otherwise eligible for current programs and supports, and also resident services, which will be offered to landlords as they develop housing through this program. Our resident services is an example of an existing partnership we already have with the CDP, and we're able to really maintain a lot of housing situations when we're able to identify what the challenge is before there becomes the chance of eviction. So that's a nice added benefit. And then we will also have online resource libraries and trainings available, as well as ultimately a place that people can list their available rental in the eight towns of the Lower and Outer Cape. So we're thrilled to offer this partnership.
So we'll leave a flyer behind for you with information, and, but residents in Harwich can learn more about these initiatives at lowercapehousing.org, which is a website for our combined organizations that has details about this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you both. Questions from the board? Larry?
How do you distribute this to people? Because now everyone is aware of the website, and how do you get information out for those that may be hard to get it to, I guess?
Sure. So we'll be, as we roll this program out over the next month, there'll be advertising on radio and in newspapers. We are appearing before all eight select boards with this announcement, contacting folks in town halls, who, the building departments, the zoning departments, who are working on, especially on accessory dwelling units, towns with housing coordinators. So there are lots of different avenues to get the word out about this program.
We also both do quite a bit of community outreach, so there will be a lot of opportunities in existing efforts with both of our organizations to distribute this information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
It's great news, and I think we should add a link to our building department website, you know, and planning. That would be helpful, too. So great news. Thank you.
Mary?
No, Larry stole my question. Great news.
Don?
Congratulations. Good news.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment announcement? Next is presentations, report of the findings and recommendations for Allen Harbor Jetty Rehabilitation with GEI Consultants, Inc. John, if you want, you can come to the table, stand up there, whatever you'd like.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Redon, Harbors Master. Just a real quick overview. A couple of years ago, we entered into a contract with GEI Consulting to take a look at the Allen Harbor West Jetty. The contract calls for kind of the site study, an initial design that, some alternatives that will be presented to you tonight. The initial design, final design, and permitting are all part of that contract that we have with GEI Consulting. So I'd like to introduce Russell Tippness from GEI Consulting. He'll go through his findings and recommendations, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Okay, so the scope of our study was just to investigate the condition and how it's performing, the Allen Harbor Jetty. The challenge is that the jetty is actually letting sand through into the channel, so we're getting more frequent dredging. As part of the study, just developing some alternatives, reviewing those alternatives, and providing a comparison, and then identifying initially at least a recommended repair for review of the town.
You can just say next slide, and I'll hand it to you.
Okay. Thank you. So this is, this is the site survey we did. We did this by a drone, and what we did is we divided the jetty into two zones, Zone A, Zone B, as you can see on the plan there. The reason for that is there's actually two different types of, two different cross-sections for the jetty. Zone A used to be a timber bulkhead, and if you go and walk down there, you can actually see the stubs of the timber piles. There's armor stone was on the jetty side of that, but on the dune side, there was some small stone. And all you can see of the old timber now is just the stubs of the original piles. Zone B on the offshore end is a more conventional jetty. It's a trapezoidal shape, the cross-section. It's got armor stone both faces, and generally Zone B is in better condition than Zone A. Both areas are fairly porous, which is why the sand's getting through. It's just old age, really, with these things. The original construction for Zone A was back in 1957, I believe, and it was extended then with the area in Zone B added on. But essentially, the gaps in the armor stone are too, too big, and it's allowing the sand through. And the other thing as part of the evaluation, we looked at the wave conditions out there. And if you look at a current 1% annual chance storm, which is the female storm, the armor stone is a little undersized. Next slide, please. So these are just some images. It's kind of pale to see them clearly, but top left, you can see a shot going straight down the navigation channel. So the jetty we're looking at is on the left-hand side of that channel. Center top is a view looking offshore along the same, same jetty. So that's really the inner part where you've got the end of the timber bulkhead, and you can see there's no timber left. Looking to the very far end, you can see the navigation beacon.
Aliens.
My brain did that earlier, but no way it's a repeat.
I'm sure they apologize for interrupting.
Center bottom, you can see again a smaller armor stone on the inside face. The dune on the left-hand side's in pretty good shape, but you can see that there's not much left of the timber. You can just about see some of the piles. It's a bit faint to see them clearly. Bottom right, this transitions to a tim, all timber bulkhead at the very inshore end as you get close to the harbor, and you can see all the holes through the timber in that area as well. So overall, the inner, inshore end of this is in fairly poor condition, and you get to the offshore end, it's actually slightly better. Next slide, please. Okay. So this is just a cross-section through Zone A, the existing. You've got the remnants of the timber, you've got a bit of armor stone. You can see the slope, though, just sand all the way through, really. That was from the survey we did a couple of years back. Next slide, please. So these, this is the first of the options we looked at. This is really what the original construction was in Zone A. So it was armor stone with a timber bulkhead on the right-hand side of that cross-section that you can see there. So this is really reconstructing it back to the original configuration. Next slide, please. This is a slight variation on that. Timber has got a life probably about 25 to 30 years, depending on what type of timber you use. The alternative here is actually using FRP, which is one of the plastic resin sheets. So it's a composite sheet, though it's not one of the cheap vinyl ones. This is one of the ones with the reinforcement in it. So it's got much more durability, and it should last about 50 years. Next slide, please. And then this is the, the last option for the Zone A that we presented, and this is just using all armor stones, so we get away from the bulkhead altogether. The challenge with this is actually going as high as the other two options. The other two had the crest up at elevation 10. Without making this structure much wider than it is today, we're limited to an elevation of about six and a half, which means more sand would get over the top. Next slide, please. So this is Zone B. This is, this is basically a patch-up job. So it's really taking the armor stone off the top, putting core stone back in, in the core of this thing to make it less porous, and then replacing the armor stone. So this is the cheapest option. It's just really trying to reconstruct and rehabilitate the existing. Next slide, please. This is full reconstruction, but back to the original cross-section. So it doesn't raise it at all, doesn't increase the armor stone size at all, but it would restore the ability to trap sand, because you'd put the core stone into it, finer core stone, so sand can't migrate through. But the crest elevation stays the same. Next slide, please. So you probably saw this, you need to watch the transition to see the difference, really, with this cross-section, but basically this is just building it a foot higher than, than existing. The goal of that being to try and trap more sand, give more, more, more volume to be able to store sand behind it. Next slide, please. And then this was the last option we proposed for Zone B, and this is upgrading the armor stone size, so that we use larger armor stone. And if we were going to do that, then the sensible thing to do is to actually design it for sea level rise. So the armor stone has really got an indefinite life, provided you maintain it and stop, stop it losing all of the core stone. So looking at sea level rise over 50-year period, this would need to be raised by a couple of feet at least, which, so that's what we've shown here, and we've designed it for the increased water depth, which means you get bigger waves at the site as well. So that's the most expensive version, obviously. So this is just stepping through those same alternatives with a summary of the costs. You can see for Option A1, A2, and A3, that's all the area with the bulkhead. The cheapest one of those is obviously no bulkhead, and that's why it's cheaper, because there is no bulkhead. But then you can see that although the FRP is slightly more expensive than timber, it's probably got twice the expected life, so it's a relatively small cost increment for the extra lifespan. For the four options for Zone B, obviously the cheapest is just patching up the existing one, the repairing it to match the original construction. It's a much shorter length than Zone A, which is why it's coming out cheaper than any of the alternatives in Zone A. But then you could, each of the next two, B3 and B4, basically increasing the performance of it by raising the height, and the last version actually upgrades the armor stone size, so it will last longer as well. Next slide, please. So just to summarize, I was three years out when I guessed when it was built. Original structure was originally built in 1954, and it was rebuilt, actually in 1954, I should say. There was a jetty there before, but in 1954, when the timber was rebuilt, that was when the extension was added, which is Zone B. There's annual dredging of the channel, and the average volume that's been coming out, I think, over the last 10 years, something like that, I looked at the records for, is about 8,000 cubic yards every year. So reconstructing the jetty will help with that. It obviously won't help with the area beyond the jetty further offshore, but this is one of the areas which does shoal in. Option A2 is the recommended alternative for Zone A, because it gives the longest life, so it's the biggest bang for the buck. And using the bulkhead there means we can actually consider raising the top elevation, which will improve its performance again. There will be a limit on how high we could go, probably how high anyone wants us to go as well, but the FRP sheet pile will only be able to stand a certain height above the stone. Option B4, I, we would recommend for Zone B, but obviously it's the highest cost. But if you're going to go in there and get the permits and do this, then it would make sense to actually do it and do it for the long term. The next bullet, it talks about sand bypassing or backpassing. So what that is, is at the, at the jetty, the, the sand travels from west to east along that shoreline, so it builds up in that area, and then gets around the end of the jetty. So by going in and periodically excavating that sand, which you can do, do with conventional excavation equipment at low tide, you then truck that sand, so either goes further back on the beach, which is backpassing, so you take it back to the west and let nature bring it back again, or else you bypass it and put it on the other side of the channel, so it doesn't end up in the channel. There's a fairly limited volume that you'd be able to reach doing that. It's only about 400 cubic yards, but including that in the permitting would actually give the town some other options to try and help control any infilling of the jetty. Total cost, if you add the two alternatives that I've recommended in there, is about 2.35 million for the complete reconstruction end-to-end. So the next steps to move that, to move this forward permitting, because it's a complete reconstruction, it's fairly extensive permitting. It's a list there of all the permits we would need. The duration to actually get those is probably at least six to nine months, probably closer to nine months these days. It seems to be taking longer with most of them. So that, that would be the next step to actually move the project forward, and at least if we went forward with a more extensive project, if the town chose not to do it all, or to phase the construction, or to do just a repair option, the same permits would actually allow you to do that. That's the presentation.
Excellent. Any questions? Thank you. Larry?
Thank you. Nice presentation, and thank you, John, for coordinating this. I have a couple of questions. One is, you talk about sea rise, you're only on the B4 option, I guess when I read it, I got to that at the end, and I was wondering why you didn't consider sea rise on, on the other BEA parts of that, and only one option?
Well, we, we would consider it. That was what I really meant when we're talking about raising the bulkhead height. So you, it's fairly easy to raise it by a couple of feet, but you wouldn't really want to raise it a lot more than that, because it would be too exposed, that sheet pile.
When you talk about B4, it says the greatest impact on resources. What, what do you mean by that statement?
The greatest impact on resources is just because of the bigger, slightly bigger footprint. So if you go higher, it inevitably gets wider.
Is that going to be a, a more of a problem getting through Conservation Commission then, and the, and the impact on the?
It, it is an expansion, so it will take a little bit more effort, but one of the things that all of the agencies like to see now, in any application, is actually accounting for resiliency and sea level rise. If you ignore it, then you'll get sent back to the drawing board and asked to do something about it.
You mentioned phasing. What would be your recommendation on that? Can we do one side first, and then the other side to spread the costs, or do you have to do it?
No. What, what I would do is I would do either Zone A or Zone B, and Zone A is the area that's in worst shape, that really needs the work, so I think that would be the way I would prioritize it, do Zone A first, and then come back and do Zone B.
And what's the practical impact? Is the channel closed during part of this, during construction, or is it very limited? Or what, how, how do you proceed from just a?
It should be limited, because the construction can all happen from landside. I didn't really get into that, so I should have probably put a slide.
So the channel, would it remain open while you're doing that?
Yeah.
What time of year would you do the work?
It'll probably be subject to a time-of-year restriction to be able to do the work, at least the in-water portion of it, anyway. So that would be the work in the channel. Means you typically can't work anytime between January and beginning of July. That's the pretty typical, typical time-of-year restriction.
John, do we get, let me ask John this. Do we get any restrictions on shellfish?
I, I think, you said shellfish, correct? I mean, I think that's going to be one of the considerations throughout the permitting process, but I, I don't see that that'd be a problem at all. I think what they would require is to go in and, you know, fish what's there, right? And then maybe come back and reseed, you know, after the project is over.
Thank you. Chris Cole, thank you.
Julie?
Thank you. This was really a lot of information. So on Zone B, which you just answered one of my questions, is that that would be second, you'd go to elevation, would it be at elevation 14? Because you're at 13 for the flood, like, is that how high you'd go up one more foot, or how would you meet that?
The top elevation right now is about seven and a half, so we're talking about going a couple of feet higher than that, so it's only about nine and a half.
Okay, it'd be nine and a half.
Yeah.
And that would still make it flood, flood resilient, or?
Right.
Okay. And then 2.35, if we were to pick the better of the two different options, second option in Zone A, fourth option in Zone B?
Correct.
And then there's a 2.35, that's just for the construction portion. What about the permitting? Do you have any kind of idea on those costs?
That's all in our contract right now.
Oh, okay. So that includes the permitting?
Yes, it does.
Oh, that's good. That's good news. Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you. Just, just one question. Option B4, what is the lifetime for that? I understood in the first one, if we pick the most expensive option, it ups it to 50 years' life. What about in B? What's the difference in?
We based it on about 50 years.
50 also?
At the end, the end of the day, the rock stays around for a long, long time. You know, it was 1954, it was last reconstructed. It just needs maintenance to be able to keep it up, but at least 50 years. So that's what we based the sea level rise figure on, was 50-year life.
And, and is, is your belief that this is the time to do it? It's at that state that?
Correct. Certainly with Zone A, because it's just letting all the sand through at the moment. Zone B is very, very porous, and you can see that with the shoaling that happens in the channel.
Thank you.
Don?
I really have nothing except to say that it seems like in Zone A, the A2 gets you a lot more years, and it addresses somewhat more resiliency, so.
Right.
John, anything you'd like to add?
I'd just like to point out a few things. Obviously, I, I think, this issue's been around a long time, the West Jetty. Yeah, I went back in records, we did a study back in 2000 to look at what to do with the Allen Harbor Jetty. Because every year, and I mean every year, if you don't dredge every year, that shoal will choke off the interest to Allen Harbor. And so it's not, it's not even an option not to dredge. And so we're spending, now that the dredge costs to the county went up $12 cubic yard this coming year, you dredge 8,000 cubic yards, that's $96,000 a year to keep that channel open. So the need is there, and I, I would point out one thing, while we spend money dredging every year, there is an upside to that, and that is, all that sand is very good sand, good quality sand, and all that sand goes to nourish our public beaches. And there's a huge demand for that, trying to keep our public beaches nourished and usable for our public. And as you know, sometimes we'll dredge two channels during a year, and sometimes we'll have surplus sand that we can go out and sell like we did this past year. So I think it's needed. I think what you see here are great options. I, I think if we choose to go forward with this, I think between myself and maybe some other staff members, we can look at grant options to help fund this. I know Cape Cod Commission and the whole municipal vulnerability, that, that piece, I don't know the right term, the, that John Ideman's working on. I know one of the things we've identified in our submission was jetty's as a vulnerability, and so there may be some funding, grant funding available for that. So I mean, that's something I think we should look at, but it's a lot of money, and I get it. But it is something that the town has looked at for many years. We've spent money on studies, and I would hate to have this study put on a shelf with not, with nothing being done, so.
What was the amount that was put on out-years in the capital plan for this?
Two million.
Two million.
So the, sorry. We spent, to answer your question, Julie, $57,000 was, was spent for the engineering services of GEI Construction, which includes the permitting and design. It doesn't include the construction oversight. So if we did go out to bid, and we wanted, you know, an onsite engineer for construction oversight, then that's not included in that 57, but we budgeted for 2 million.
Thank you. And then, John, what's the value of the sand that we're selling from dredging every year? It's 96,000 to dredge. There's a value to the town for its beaches, but there's also what you sell. What are we getting back from that?
Well, I can just tell you, I wish I had my file, Mr. Chairman, but I, I can tell you, you know, last year when we sold, we did two channels, right? So we put a lot of sand on public beaches, but we also went out to bid, and we generated about $130,000 selling that sand to, to private homeowners, and there was a number of homes that we put it on. I, I don't know the exact volume, I can get you that, but when we do sell sand, there's a huge demand for it. You know, I have a folder, list of homeowners who have said, "Next time you dredge, I'd like to purchase sand." So that's something to consider. And I guess the only other piece I, and maybe Russell, you correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, when we do this, I want to make sure people understand, it'll certainly help the situation, but we're still going to have to maintenance dredge every three years or so. You know, I mean, especially on the outer end, because there is a section that shoals near, near buoy one and two coming in, which is not protected by the jetty. So this isn't going to solve the whole thing, but it certainly will help.
Thank you. Intentions will be to bring this back for a further conversation. Tonight's listed as a presentation. I will take public comment in a minute.
I have one follow-up question. Follow, thank you, Michael, following what Mary's question and your comment about, well, let me get. question and your comment about, well, let me get directly to the question. Is there a point when that fails? I mean, your projections on dredging, is going, you know, those projections on dredging and selling is kind of this, the assumption the status quo. Is there a guess on when that, if it fails entirely, then the game changes, right?
You mean if the jetty fails entirely?
Right. And some of that looks in pretty bad shape, so.
Clearly, I think it's a game changer if it totally fails. On the timing of it, I, you have a?
What's your best, any idea of how sturdy it is? Because the comments on dredging and selling changes if it fails.
I think it's almost impossible to say, oh, it's going to last another 10 years or another. Because it's going to come down to one big storm. As the condition gets worse and worse, it'll come down to one big storm, and all of a sudden, you won't have a jetty anymore. So that.
It's a gamble, kind of.
Pardon?
It's a bit of a gamble, then.
Yeah, it is. It's, it takes, you know, the 100-year storm, if that comes through, then you probably will find that most of the rock will be in the channel.
We'll have a lot of problems then.
That won't be your only problem, right?
Anyone in the public wish to comment on this?
Bruce Nightingale, I've been following this for a lot of years. And John answered a lot of my questions that I was going to put out. My biggest concern is the sand. Without that sand nourishment, our public beaches will starve for sand. The sand constantly moves towards Witchmere Harbor, backs up against that big breakwater. Right now, we have a very sandy bottom. And if you swim, you don't have to walk in, the sand is wonderful. If we don't nourish those beaches but every three years, we're going to have a lot of rocks. People are not going to be happy. I know the jetty has to be repaired. It's been in tough shape for forever. But I'm worried about the sand, and I'm worried about what it's going to do to our beaches, which are the most important thing in this town. I think we have to be careful with this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Anyone else? Thank you, John. And thank you for the presentation. John, we'll work timing on bringing this back in. All right, next up, public hearing, 2022 seasonal liquor license renewal for Chase Escape Cape Cod LLC DBA, The Summer House Cafe, Thomas Polina, Polini, manager, 126 Route 28. Can I get the public hearing notice read?
Harwich Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Hearing, Application for Renewal of Liquor License, Monday, April 11, 2022. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Mass General Laws Chapter 138 on Monday, April 11, 2022, no earlier than 6:30 PM in the Don B. Griffin Room located at Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, for the purpose of considering the seasonal all-alcohol liquor license renewal application submitted by Chase Escape Cape Cod DBA, The Summer House Cafe, 126 Route 28, Harwich. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend. Remote participation is also offered. Please see the posted agenda for dial-in information. Signed by the local licensing authority, the Harwich Board of Selectmen, in the Cape Cod Times, March 28, 2022.
Thank you, Mary. Public hearing is open.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just for the record, you'll see in your packet that the certified letter was addressed to Mr. Thomas Polini. As you know, Mr. Polini is the manager of record. We're joined this evening by his business partner, Mr. Fiorello, if I said that right. Thank you. And I would just ask if Mr. Fiorello could explain Mr. Polini's absence. I don't want to violate any privacy laws, but his partner would be able to explain his absence.
Thank you.
Can I ask the board for a couple of questions first?
You can state your name for the record to start.
Sorry. Nicholas Fiorello for the Summer House Cafe, the Chase Escape LLC.
And now you may answer the town administrator's request. And then, and then you're welcome to ask some questions.
Thomas Polini, the manager on the license currently, has been suffering with, I think it's some.
You don't have to go into it. He's ill.
Very ill. And he's been, as of last Thursday, was back in the hospital and has been in hospital or hospice for quite a while and working as he can, communicating the best he can.
Perfect. That's plenty. Thank you. Joe, does that satisfy?
Absolutely. I want Mr. Fiorello to be able to explain it to satisfy Mr. Polini's rights to privacy.
Okay. Now you may ask questions.
Yes. Is there a vote in front of you tonight?
There can be.
Okay. Is that the intention tonight?
I guess it depends on where we end up.
Okay. Well, I'd like to set this off as an informational discussion, because I thought I was coming here today to discuss the status of the building permit and the communication that I got from the different various emails that I saw from the town. Basically positioned that unless and until that I had a building permit that I couldn't renew, get, or have issued a liquor license. What I believe I'm here for is to inform the town about the status of the building project and the permit. And I didn't know it was conditioned upon whether or not, one, I had a building permit, two, if I did or did not have a building permit, three, I could not just renew the liquor license that we got approved in front of you guys last year, because we all know that the project is under redevelopment and because of Mr. Polini's health and the situation with the building permit, which I'd like to talk about tonight, we weren't in a position to open, as we know. So if we just go back in history, it's the same situation that we had before when I came in, the place wasn't open. It was licensed. And we filed for permits, which we did receive, to reopen it. And we've been in that process of reopening and working diligently. And I want to explain a little bit about what the diligence is in reference to where we're at with the project. And I don't believe it is fair or reasonable that if this turns into a vote to either approve or deny tonight, one, I'm prepared for it, two, I got proper notice about it, and three, you're making a prerequisite or condition precedent that I do or do not have, want a building permit as a condition why the town might not review just simply a renewal of a liquor license. I already have it issued, it's mine. So with those things under discussion, I'm here to openly discuss. If there's a vote, I'd like to inform the board that I would obtain counsel if we were going to bring it to a vote. But hopefully, this will just be an informational session, which I thought it was. I can explain where we're at with the, with the project and address some of the issues through various emails that I've got from various departments. Because ultimately, minus the entertainment license, which is a different discussion, which we're not here to talk about, I think it's vital to the rehabilitation and the project that it has a liquor license like it has for 53 years that continues there as we look to reopen and repurpose it into what it was before, similar to what it was way back when as an inn that offered alcohol and food and beverage. And entertainment is less of a focus, because I know where the town is very concerned about entertainment and the interruption with the neighbors and the entertainment it used to have. And I'd like to have an open dialogue with the town and what the town would like to see and what the town is looking to do or what is actually the intent of the town about the liquor license. And I'll restate again, this is a license that was issued to us. It's ours. We came in to just simply renew that license. And I've gotten a plethora of emails from different departments that say that I can't renew it because.
Can I cut you off? We're the local liquor licensing authority, the Board of Selectmen. So no other department gets to decide if you have a liquor license.
I didn't realize that.
Okay.
That's good news.
Other departments can decide whether or not you can be open.
That's good.
So you certainly can't exercise the use of your liquor license if you don't have an occupancy permit and you're not open.
I agree with you.
Okay. So let me tell you why we're here. And then maybe we can cut some of the conversation short, and then you can make an explanation as to why. So Harwich Board of Selectmen Liquor License Regulations, Section 1.19 states, in relevant part that, and then there's Section 1, and there's B, C, D, and E. And C states, if the licensing authority becomes aware of a license that's not being exercised, it may conduct a hearing to obtain a status update. So, public hearing, 2022 seasonal liquor license renewal for Chase Escapes, Cape Cod LLC DBA, The Summer House Cafe, Thomas Polini, manager, 126 Route 28, gets us to that point. I'm not sure what you've got besides that that led you to believe that you weren't properly noticed. This is a public record. I would have to see what you got. But this has been the agenda item since, I don't know, before we advertised the public hearing. Let me, I'm not going to read this entire email because it's a lot.
What email are you referencing?
I'll share that email when it's time to email it. But this is an email on our liquor regulations from our attorney, Jeffrey Blake.
Okay.
Which points out, you're going to let me finish before you talk.
Sure.
While my, in my opinion, the regulations clearly provide, the board can revoke the license at any time it deems public good is not being served, or failure to notify the board of a temporary closure. That's part of it. If the establishment did not notify the board of the closure, which my opinion, not the board's opinion, is that you didn't notify us of the closure because you were never open, is grounds for revocation. If the establishment did notify the board of the closing, under the above cited regulations, the board, in my opinion, is authorized to require the establishment to attend the renewal hearing, which we did, and provide the board with an update as the schedule, as of the scheduled reopening of the establishment. And that hearing, the board can and should put the establishment on notice that it is considering revocation, which we haven't discussed at all, in the event that the license is not exercised. In either event, if the board, if that's the route the board wants to take, it should schedule another hearing in three months for a further status update on the opening. And if that, if at that time the establishment is not open, the board could schedule a final hearing three months after the status relegation hearing, at which it can revoke the license. And then, and again, I'll share this with you via email, but it goes on to A, B, C, C, and their normal rulings. So where we're at right now is to find out what you're doing.
Thank you. And you did reference it's a status hearing. And I've been getting a lot of communications from different departments that reference this hearing. And it's a lot of mixed signals. And I guess I should just give you a status of where the project's at. So unfortunately, based upon the health of the manager.
Michael.
Go ahead, Joe.
If I could, just for the purpose of the record, the town Board of Selectmen as licensing authority directs me as town administrator to send any notices of hearing to establishments. There was a letter sent via certified mail and email dated March 24, 24, 2022. It was sent to the manager of record, Mr. Polini. It was a notice that it's a notice of public hearing regarding Chase Escape Cape Cod LLC doing business as The Summer House Cafe. Dear Mr., may I read it, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
Dear Mr. Polini, on Monday, April 11, 2022, no earlier than 6:30 PM, the Harwich Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 138 in order to consider the renewal of the Section 12 Seasonal All-Alcohol Liquor License held by Chase Escape Cape Cod LLC, doing business as The Summer House Cafe, located at 126 Route 28, Harwich. Specifically, the local licensing authority will investigate your failure to open The Summer House Cafe for business during the entire prior licensing period, 2021, as required pursuant to the Harwich Board of Selectmen Liquor Regulations and General Laws Chapter 138, Section 77. You are invited to participate in the hearing and be represented by counsel at your own expense if you wish. The manager of record for the establishment is required to attend. And again, that's under my signature and title as administrator. That's why I asked the question at the top of it, Mr. Chairman, meaning Mr. Polini responded immediately that he was aware of the notice that while he was unable for health reasons to attend, he indicated that the establishment would be represented this evening. So through you, Mr. Chairman, to the gentleman representing The Summer House Cafe, I would ask why they claim there's no notice given when we have proof that this notice was received by the manager of record.
Go ahead.
So I heard you in the beginning of your statement, reading the letter aloud on the record, that you said it is in front of the board to be heard for a revocation. If you read that first sentence again, that's different from what he said his notice is about a status.
I'm only, I'm only reading, I'm reading what's through, and I said my, my belief. So let's, go ahead, Joe, what's your, where are you going?
In the beginning, it's very specific.
Wait a minute. Go ahead, Joe. Done?
Well, yes, the town would have a pertinent question for Mr. Fiorello, and that is, did the establishment receive the letter that was just read or not?
Can you guys just tell me what you're doing? And we can just do what we need to do and move forward the project.
Did you get the letter?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
In Mr. Polini's health conditions, he needs to be here.
Okay.
We need counsel. But what you're saying and what you said and what I've been noticed of are two completely different things.
I'm reading off what my agenda says.
No, but in your agenda, in your agenda brought me here, that says, give us a status. What his letter says is that you're today, in that letter, in that specific language, in the first three sentences, that you're going to consider the renewal or not today.
And, and we have public hearing, 2022 seasonal liquor license renewal for Chase Escape.
Can you read that again, the first paragraph?
No, sir, I don't work for you. I work for the board.
Joe, did you always say renewal or revocation?
It actually says, hearing for purpose of renewal, and specifically to investigate failure to open.
Thank you.
Failure to open is what counsel's referred to and counsel's document to its client, the board.
Okay. So why don't you go ahead and tell us what you're doing, and then we'll get into board deliberation.
I don't want to have the board deliberate. I'm entitled to have an attorney here.
Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we?
Hang on one second. Sorry. Go ahead, Joe.
Wouldn't we want to continue it rather than close it?
Well, we'll have to readvertise it if we close it.
See, if we can just be open and honest about what's going on, this will go really easy.
I think you want to continue.
Because what I'm hearing from what that notice is.
I didn't tell you, you can talk. You're not, you're not going to monopolize the meeting, okay?
I don't want to.
You wait till you're recognized, and then you can speak. Thank you.
The board has given appropriate notice to the public and to the establishment that the board has the right to have this discussion this evening. Whether the applicants or any of their representatives wish to participate or not, it does not minimize the fact that the board, through counsel's direction, is doing the appropriate actions. If you were to continue the hearing tonight, based on the claims that the town can prove very easily are incorrect, then you're giving more time to the establishment to flout the law that the board has given applicant, legitimate and applicable notice. The board has the right to do any action you see fit under your hearing, which could be continue, which could be to close the public hearing part of it, or take any action under the notice that you've given. But for Mr. Fiorello to stand here this evening, with the number of times that he and every other representative of their establishment, be it family members himself or Mr. Polini, to claim that the establishment does not have noticed, is not something that the town would support. And I think that the town would be clearly upheld should this matter ever find its way to the Alcohol and Beverages Control Commission. The licensing authority has the right to proceed as you see fit this evening if you so choose.
So the options are us closing the public hearing, which is going to get rid of any, any discussion. And the board will continue to have its conversation and then decide if we want to continue it or not. So that's, that is.
That's why I was brought here in the first place.
That is your, that is your option. I think the two, I think you're, that's not what you were brought here for.
You opened up by. You opened up by saying it was to hear.
I read to you a letter basically saying what our options were. What I'm telling you is, what you were brought here for is exactly what was noticed in the public hearing, and exactly what you, your partner consented to getting. That's what I'm telling you. The board may decide to take a, may decide to take your word at where you're at, and then give you time, or they may not. But you were brought here for a very specific reason, and it's on the agenda. We advertised a public hearing, and your partner acknowledged getting the letter. So I'm going to ask you one more time. Do you want to continue and give us what you're, what you want to discuss, or do you not?
I would like to continue.
Okay. Then continue and tell us where you're.
If the board's intent tonight.
I don't know what the board's intent is, but you just heard it. We have.
I would like to ask the board, I'm entitled to have counsel.
Okay. So now I'm going to close the public hearing.
That there is a discrepancy in the notice given to us. Mr. Polini was hospitalized. That is not good notice. I didn't know what was going on tonight. When you read it off.
Did you read what you were here for tonight?
Yeah, I read what you read. I had.
No, you didn't read what, so you read the public, what we're here for tonight.
It's one sentence. Give you a status of what's happening with the establishment. Doesn't say.
Go ahead.
Vote for revocation.
So, while, while we're in the midst of this public hearing, and without making a decision yet whether we close or continue, can we ask a couple of questions after the public has an opportunity to speak, or do you want us to go first?
No, we were, we were going to call, I was going to have this gentleman give his speech, and wherever they're at, and then call on the public, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and then the board's going to deliberate.
So, yeah, okay, that's fine. The only thing I was going to say is, do you want us to ask questions based on the information we've received? Because the first, you know what I'm saying? Like, health has given us a specific.
I don't even want to get into that. It really comes down to.
Oh, that's interesting. Health giving you updates I don't know about.
I'm going to, I'm going to literally, I'm going to have you removed from this meeting if you interrupt one more time. You're not helping at all. I'll call on you when it's your turn, okay?
I'd like to have an attorney present.
Okay. Joe, um.
I don't have one, and I have a right to have one of my First Amendment rights.
Okay. Bye. I'm going to, can I get a motion to, go ahead, Joe.
I would urge the board first, for the board as a licensing authority, to go through your discussion points tonight, whether it's with Mr. Fiorello, with me, or anyone else that's present, because the individual claiming to represent the establishment is now claiming that they did not receive ample notice. I'm not an attorney. I don't believe the United States Constitution, First Right Amendments are what are at play here. Rather, it's the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, Public Records Law, and Hearing Laws, and the town has demonstrated that there was receipt by the establishment on March 24, clearly stating that the board as the licensing authority, as is noticed on the agenda, is discussing the renewal of the liquor license.
So I get that.
In addition to that, the board has also given notice that specifically the licensing authority will also investigate the failure of the establishment to open last year. And lastly, they were invited to participate. They're not required, and they were offered to have representation of counsel at their own expense. They chose not to avail themselves.
So procedurally, Joe, does it make sense to close the public hearing, given his First Amendment speech and his right to counsel? Does it make sense to end that part of it and get into the board conversation? Because I agree. The board needs to have the conversation tonight, and a liquor license holder isn't going to tell us how to run our meetings.
Understood. Under the open meeting law, the presiding officer of a public body is the sole determiner of who shall present and speak at a public meeting at which this hearing is being held. So no member of the board, myself, nor anyone else present, can speak without leave of the chairman. So you have the right, whether you're in public hearing or simply public meeting, to decide who speaks and when.
Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this topic tonight? Is there anyone online that wishes to comment on this topic tonight?
Moved to close the hearing.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. I'm going to do that by roll call vote. Don.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Comments, Don?
Yeah, in addition, in fact, we all are agreement that it wasn't open last year.
I'd be happy, is this off the record?
No, forget that. I, I've driven past it numerous times and never saw it open at any point.
We're all very aware it didn't open.
Okay. Except that the application that Mr. Polini submitted, under penalties of perjury, asks if the premises are now open, and if not, to explain below, and it's completely blank. And it also further.
I'm sorry, what was the last part of that?
Excuse me. It also further, when your workers' compensation and insurance affidavit states you have 18 employees. It wasn't open.
We all know that the place didn't open last season. We all know that, just like when I came in before, I came in mid-season. If I came in the year prior, I think I applied for the license in 2020, or thereabout. It wasn't going to open in 2020. So what you're saying now is because, let's say I just got, like, Groundhog Day, we went back to, but it's 2021 in December, and I started, but I didn't open. We know I wouldn't be able to open in the calendar year during the construction.
Okay. Asked and answered.
Point of information, I'm not saying anything. I am quoting from the application that was submitted. It maintains that it was open.
Not until I tell you you can talk.
And furthermore.
One more time, the public, no, it's not. Public.
Are you guys having a closed meeting at the commission debating whether or not that you can?
I want him to, I want him removed. So if we're going to call police, I'm calling police. I want him.
Everyone just relax here.
No, we can't relax.
Why?
David, David, I want him removed. Gone.
I'll just watch it on TV and call him then.
Excellent.
Everyone have a nice night.
Go ahead. Don, anything further?
Just to state that there's a difference between what I'm saying and what was on a piece of paper that was submitted to us under penalties of perjury.
Thank you. Mary?
This is pretty much a non-starter for me. The last time we saw this gentleman, I think it was June or July, and it was Disneyland of Harwich is what was described, and he was going to be open. Three of us had to ask him when he was going to be open before he finally came out with a date in August. It's now almost a year later. Nothing's going on there. I am not inclined to approve anything. Entertainment, food, dancing, whatever.
Thank you. Julie?
No, I couldn't, I couldn't agree. I couldn't agree more, but the main question here is, none of this is even worth discussing. Health tells us he needs a new septic system. Conservation says whatever he does, he hasn't filed yet, so he would have to file. And that's only if there was a change. I understand that. But the non-starter is health. You know, not even building, and fire gave us good feedback. You know, I don't, I mean, water, the water department, so to me, I agree that there's no, no action for us to take. They need to take the action.
Larry?
We have too many letters. We can't take an action. I agree with that. My, my confusion, Michael and Joe, is, I mean, that's the easy one. We can't move because there's too many things he has to do to, to open. But I'm still trying to understand, Joe, is your comment is, is that do we try to, we have to take action because he didn't open last year when he said he was going to? Is that a separate discussion we're supposed to be having now?
If I may. No, it's, it's, it's all supposed to be wrapped up together. You, you through the administration department, received an application for renewal, as did any other establishment that has a seasonal liquor license in the town of Harwich. It's the form that comes on A, B, C, C, letterhead, and it indicates 2022 Retail License Renewal, and on the face of it, it has all the descriptive information about the establishment in question.
That's okay, Joe. We can take one action tonight, and we're okay.
So if I could, though, I think it's important to get this on the record. To the question, or to the statements and questions made by Selectman Howell a moment ago, the applicant, manager of record, Mr. Polini, signed the form, dated the form, and submitted the form, and under item number four, it says the premises are now open for business. If not, explain below, and there's a box below with additional information. When that was submitted, staff was aware, administration staff was aware, that the establishment is not operational during the previous season. Staff inquired of counsel what is the requisite steps that staff and/or the board should take, and that's what the chairman referred to earlier, was direction by counsel. So you gave notice that you were willing to talk about the renewal. You also gave notice that you had to investigate why the license was not used for the entire season of '21. And so the chairman's probably going to advise you in a moment, or before you conclude this matter completely, that the board should vote to set another hearing, and I have a date and time recommended for that, three months hence, where the establishment is allowed to come back and give another status update. All of that is not only appropriate, it's necessary and required if the board is going to operate in accordance with your regulations and state law.
Thank you, Joe.
Joe couldn't have said it better, and I think I'll refrain, I think I'll refrain from many comments I'd like to make, and that should prob, Mary kicked me. Mary, that shouldn't be a, he should not be allowed to represent that establishment.
So do we need a motion to come back for three months?
Regardless of the letters that we received, because that's outside of what we're doing. They already have a liquor license. So the action that this board needs to take is, A, to start the process of taking the liquor license back, or, or, or giving them the process as outlined by KP law. And the process is another hearing in three months, and then a future hearing in three more months. If they don't exercise the use of their liquor license within the six months, it's appropriate for this board to take the liquor license back. I think the gentleman that was here is under the assumption that he has what's referred to in other places as a pocket license, and that he can keep that license as long as he wants without using it. That's only an assumption, but that's not how it works here. The process has been laid out. I would recommend to the board that we, because they already have a license, that we have another hearing in three months for a status of where they're at, and we would get a status from our, from the rest of our departments to verify that, and then a future hearing of six months out from tonight, where we would then vote to revoke the license if they're not open. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I heard Jeff say this before, when we had that big hearing with all of the license holders that were here for infractions of one sort or another. My only concern about this is, that is at a point in time where you have a license, and then you call them in and say you haven't been using your license, and you call them in again, talk about possibility of revocation. We can't revoke something that expires. It expired. You'd have to actually renew it in order to go through the process of the three months and three months so that we could pull it back. And, and that doesn't even address the fact, as Joe pointed out, that on the application form, it starts out by saying hereby certify and swear under penalties of perjury. They lied on an application form.
Allegedly.
At least an omission.
Joe, any comments?
I think the next action for the board is to affirm that there should be a public hearing on Monday, July 11, 2022, no earlier than 6:00 PM, and I'll only offer 6:00 PM in case you want to go to summer hours. Otherwise, I'd say no earlier than 6:30.
Go ahead, Mary.
So, or what you're suggesting is we take no action on the license?
Correct. So to what, to what Mr. Howell's saying is counsel has opined that while this is a seasonal license, the A, B, C, C still takes a very long view towards any licensee, be they annual or seasonal, and the recommended course of action is what you're doing this evening, and potentially we'll be doing three months from today.
And ultimately, you know, we have to go back in, in time, because though we took them at their word, and I'm not sure that it was even a unanimous vote, but we did take them at their word that they were going to open, and we gave them a license when they weren't open. We just, they kept telling us they were going to open. We gave them a license in good faith that they were going to open. Counsel spelled out the proper way to revoke a license, and it is exactly what Joe has said, and what I read to the gentleman that couldn't follow the rules earlier. Mary?
But we're revoking a license that we haven't renewed, correct?
We're not revoking it until up to six months from now. We're going to have another hearing of status update. Joe, on the renewal part of it, it's my understanding that we will be renewing the license.
Correct. That.
Because we, we have no grounds and haven't given proper notice not to renew the license. And there is a process, as we all remember from those hour, two, three-hour-long hearings that we had on other establishments on revoking licenses. So following our own liquor regulations and advice of counsel, it would be six months from now that we would revoke that license after following the proper steps.
That makes, oh, sorry. That makes more sense. We would renew it three months, get a status, and three months after that, and it looks very unlikely to me like he will ever be open.
Julie?
So I don't know how we renew it when health says that they can't do anything. They can't.
Just because they hold a license, they can't use it unless they have an establishment to use it in.
Yeah, I get that.
So no different than we, when we gave them a license last year with the promise that they would be open. It's no different from that. So we would be renewing a license for a restaurant that's not actually open, that's under construction, that they have high hopes of opening. But we have not followed the process unless we do this process. Larry?
I think we should follow Joe's recommendation and meet in three months and follow the process, because they can't operate without the building permits, without the fire permit, so that's a non-issue.
Without a septic.
Without a septic. It's sort of important, too.
Anything further? Don?
No.
Mary?
No, I'm good.
So my question is, do we need a formal motion on that?
We do.
Do I have to?
Do you want to give us the?
And it would simply be on the follow-up hearing.
Yes.
So that I would ask the board to vote to establish Monday, July 11, 2022, as another hearing in three months for a further status update.
Isn't that more unless you renew the license?
Well, we, we don't have to renew the license tonight. We can renew the license next week. Tonight, we can renew the license tonight based on what the agenda says, but let's get this first part of it out. But we will ultimately have to renew the license, Don.
So moved, what Joe said.
A hearing with a date certain.
Schedule another hearing in three months for a further status update on the opening.
Monday, July 11, no earlier than 6:00 PM.
I second Mary's motion.
Okay. All right. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. I will bring back the renewal license. I'm not taking that up tonight. Consent agenda. Go ahead. Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Don.
Yep. I just want to interject. It's another sad note for the town of Harwich. It came to my attention today that Dolly Parkhurst, her long-term, longtime treasurer, passed away a little over a week ago. She was an amazing woman. She did a terrific job. She formed basically the backbone of the downstairs for that period of time. Those of us who knew her are going to surely miss her.
Thank you, Don. Consent agenda?
I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda. First, to vote to approve the following Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, December 14, 2020, September 27, 2021, and October 12, 2021. And second, to approve Caleb Chase requests for the following amounts: one and a thousand, one, a second one for a thousand, and a third one for $800.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read. Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Hey, yeah, go ahead.
I move that we vote to approve the committee appointment recommended by the interview committee. Emily Brudy, planning board, full member. Term expires on June 30, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
She was a candidate that Don and I interviewed for the recreational committee. We had more candidates in openings, and very impressive, and so we discussed other openings. I think she'll be a great fit for planning.
Great. Don?
Yeah, as long as we have a holy pulpit here. That fills them up in terms of full-time members, but we could still use a couple applicants for alternates if someone in the public is interested.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. And I'm an aye. Joe, B? Next steps for 203 Bank Street?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'll give me a moment to get my notes. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what you'll see is Joseph Clancy of the Clancil Appraisal Company has completed his analysis and appraisal of the property that we refer to as 203 Bank Street, which we know includes one parcel of about a quarter of an acre that has a building on it. And again, Mr. Clancy was directed to have that parcel be the predominant parcel, even though there are additional three other parcels that relate to the overall properties to be disposed of. You can see in his proposal that he's indicated that he concludes that a fair value, fair appraisal for that building and that property inclusive is $467,000. So the next step would be for the board to have me proceed with the RFP built around those properties with that understanding of the appraised value, or take any other action.
Thank you. Larry, any questions?
I think I questioned this before, but just help me understand then. So that's for 203. When the RFP goes out, how do we handle the other parcels on that then?
So the RFP will make reference to all four parcels and will indicate that the town emphasizes, and it'll say which parcel is the quarter acre that has the building on it, but that the town also values the entire property to be at least $467,000.
But the appraisal actually comes back to $597,000 if you look at the other properties, right?
Sorry, I was looking at it as I understood Mr. Clancy's—
Where they give all four?
I'm looking at page 35.
If I look at the—
The appraisal.
That's for 203. But if you look further in the document, I just had here. In the packet, I'm looking at the number in the packet.
So I think what you're looking for in the packet is my combination of the original property records, and that's why we sought the appraisal. Because we recognize that not all of the parcels had the value that they're presently assessed at. So the appraisal process was meant to derive what we consider, what the market would consider a more equitable cost.
So with the intent to go out for an RFP for the other parcels then?
Correct. It's all—the whole thing is under your discretion. All four parcels under your discretion to sell.
And what's the timing then of the follow-up of the other parcels? Will I go out immediately, or you—
It would all be represented in the same RFP.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's— I asked him others, but I think that—
Julie, any questions?
Well, I know it's hard to get an appraiser, so I know this took a little bit of time. But I'm just questioning $467,000 for two acres walkable to Harwich Port. I just feel like—
With the building on it?
Yeah. I just feel like it's a kind of lower value, but just my only comment.
Mary?
I wondered the opposite. The comparables that were quoted, none of them had a building on it that's old and probably has asbestos in it that those people, if they're going to build, would have to take down. And none of them had the wetlands issued. I tried to get ahold of Amy today, but I didn't catch up to her. Because some chunk of that, two acres, is unusable.
Yeah, true.
And if that 60-foot— what do they call that? The do not disturb? If that gets extended to 60 feet, even more. So I wondered if 267 isn't a little bit high? Based on—
467.
Yeah. Based on those two factors.
Don?
This is only one way of knowing. We put it out. See what happens.
Joe, do we have the assessed value?
So I think that's what Selectman Ballantyne was referring to. If you look at the combination of the four property cards, it was in excess of $500,000.
Okay.
That's why we sought the appraisal to get what we consider to be more accurate for the realities of the property in question.
Thank you.
Well, my— excuse me, Michael.
Go ahead.
What I'm trying to drive at is I don't want to sell 203 and then disregard the other value, the other size that has some value, and in essence, give that away. I think as a town, we're responsible for gaining the revenue we can from that, whatever it is. And that's why I'm concerned about trying to piecemeal it, and then I don't want us to lose track if there's more there. In this assessment, there's some weathering issues, granted, but they were talking about two, possibly two lots. That should be considered, I think. I just don't want to give that away and assume it's no value.
Go ahead, Joe.
Sure, in the cover letter that Mr. Clancy provides, he confirms that the property consists of four lots with a combined total site area of 89,891 square feet or 2.06 acres per plan of land that was provided previously by Paul Sweetser on 2021. The 6,700-square-foot former Harbor Masters building will be included in the marketing of the site. So he's referencing all four lots and what we refer to as the property. So the property is all four, the building, the appraisal is 467. The RFP would talk about the property, which would consist of those four lots.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Waystack?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I just—with Mr. Ballantyne's questions, I was concerned if you were trying to be going out piecemeal of those individual lots versus what I'd been following for the last six months or so, that it was being combined as one parcel under the RFP. And please correct me if I'm incorrect.
It's a board's decision, but Joe, do you want to comment?
Sorry, that's what I thought I was just saying.
Okay, Don?
Looking at it as one property.
That's what I thought everybody was saying, too.
Mary?
No. No, that's—
Mary?
Well, I think that clears me because I don't— well, I made my statement. I want to be sure we get full value for the property.
And just so we're clear, because now we've talked about a lot of acreage and prices, the appraised value is $467,000, that's in its entirety. The assessed value is $597,000, and that's in its entirety. I would just comment that the middle school, the former middle school, I think, is still appraised at $12 million. But the $467,000—
Yeah, I'm worried about the—
He seemed like a fair appraisal.
About appraisal, not the assessment.
Yeah. Joe?
You made me snort.
So the pleasure of the board is to move forward with the appraisal to sell 203 Bank Street, and we will certainly put the appraised value in the recognized value in the RFP, or—
Correct. The way that it would be constructed is we would say that the town is looking to sell the property known as 203 Bank Street, which consists of four lots with a total of 89,891 square feet or roughly 2.06 acres. The town understands that to be valued at no less than $467,000 with a recently assessed value in total of—and whatever the property cards read. So that we're saying that the town's looking at the appraisal here. We understand that there could be another value there, and then we can build our criteria on whether they've hit to the appraisal level, or anything else the board would like me to do.
Joe, under the procurement laws, do we have to say no less than value, no less than the appraised value?
So what the appraisal has done is the town had the right, because we're a municipality, we had the right to go off of the assessed value simply as is. If you may recall, the discussion amongst the board was you thought that that may be too high given the unique characteristics of all the property there that are outlined very explicitly in Mr. Clancy's proposal. So that's why we commissioned the appraisal. So I would argue under 30B, we have to go to the appraisal at least. We wouldn't object to any proposals that came in higher, for sure, but that if we were setting a value, we would see it as valued as no less than $467,000.
Any further questions from the board?
I have one, Michael.
Go ahead.
Just for clarification, I was interested in that, in your appraisal report, it says internal— Basically, it says this is for internal review purposes only. The intended use is the town of Harwich. Does that mean it's a block from someone's from a public buying the property?
Could you tell me where you see that? I just wanted a familiar—
Well, in the packet, I don't have the number on it, but the packet is page 92.
It means the appraisal was for the town of Harwich.
Yeah, it's the appraisal.
Is that what it means? Okay. I think Michael's answered for me, then.
If I'm wrong, Joe can bring it back next week.
Yep.
All right, Joe, can we get this done next week and have it sold by town meeting?
We can absolutely have it sold by a town meeting.
Oh, town meeting.
A town meeting.
A town meeting.
Any further direction needed?
Well, just the sense of the board. Is it your understanding that an RFP will be created to sell the four lots, including the building as is, as one property with a value understood to be no less than $467,000? And so if that's the case, we'll build our evaluative criteria around that pricing structure as well as some other discussion about the board. I think you're interested in what the potential uses are, so we could talk about anything that is related to community efforts or things of that nature. So whatever the board wants to consider, we put in it for evaluative criteria. We could talk about it now, or we could have it come back next week for a further discussion.
I don't want to discuss it next week. I'm ready.
You're done.
Yeah, I'm ready.
I just want to make sure that we can capture what the board's expectations are.
Mr. Waystack?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your indulgence. We went through this process in the West Harwich School. RFP was put out. Very little response, and having to put it out again. I would just caution you as someone who deals with value all the time. I thought it was a little rich, to be frank with you, the appraisal. If you set that as a minimum, you may be just kicking the can down the road. That you may not get responses at that number, and you'll have to come back and put it out again. So I just caution you on using that appraised value as your basic base to go out for your RFP.
Thank you. And the way I'm hearing our chief procurement officer is that's the appraisal, and that's what we have to put for a minimum.
30B requires the town to establish a value for the property. We could have done the assessed values, which are higher. We're relying upon an appraisal, and I do think to some degree, we're married to that appraisal. Unless the board's willing—
I guess it's a starting point. I agree with Richard. I don't want to kick this down the road for 30 years like we did the last one, so. And that one, we took half the assessed value on, roughly half. But we need a starting point. Go ahead.
You know, and I appreciate that there's a lot of wetlands on the property. I would say, I mean, obviously, if we don't get a good result from the RFP, but, you know, you're talking about two acres. We don't really, unfortunately, have all the breakdown on what's buildable and what's not, the buildable upland. But two acres close to Harwich Port, depending on who's interested, whether it's conservation or something else, but if somebody bought that to develop, you know, based on having a pre-existing non-conforming building there, there's potential. And you really would have your own little area there with two acres and wetlands. So I think there's value that's maybe not there to see right there, but there is value based on the size.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Tom Evans. I'm the president of the Harwich Conservation Trust. And as you know, that's an abutting property. Our immediate interest would be in the parking and visitor access to that 66-acre property, which is really central to the life and vitality and natural environment of that area. It's a town resource. We would like it to continue to be available. Acting alone, we would probably look at that at that appraised value and say, that's a pretty high number, given the other projects that we have. But we recognize that this is a board decision. You're in control of the property, and we look forward to responding to that RFP when it comes out.
Thank you. Go ahead, Don.
Unless—I—thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unless I'm out of line here, I don't think anything precludes you from partnering with some other entity to enter a bid if you are interested in some parts of it but not in others.
Yes, if that's the way the RFP is written, we would absolutely have that option. So, thank you.
Joe, is there any way to— I would hate to Mr. Waystack's comments. I would hate to leave a lot of people that are interested. Is there a way to look into if we have to put that minimum number? I mean, that is the appraised number, but we also got an appraised number recently for a lot off 124 that's landlocked between a bunch of other lots we now own, and that was $170,000. So can we look at the procurement laws before we write this and see if there's a way? And I would hate to single out or not have a chance for Harwich Conservation Trust at least to partner with somebody, or— I know you're the procurement officer, so I'm allowed to say whatever I want. You can't, but—
Got that, all right.
I guess I'll leave it at that. Don, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Isn't there a way of just flat-out putting that figure in, saying the town's assessed value is, without using the word minimum?
Joe?
Under 30B, the town has to derive a value that you look at. If you come in lower than the appraisal, you would want to give direction to me as to why we believe the value is lesser and for what reasons. So that should there ever be a routine audit by the inspector general's office, because the municipality does have the right to sell their property for less than appraised value,[1569.84] the municipality does have the right to sell their property for less than appraised value, but we just have to be very clear in how we've determined that. If I, if I could, just to be further clear, that in Mr. Clancy's appraisal under the property data, which for the appraisal itself is page 27, the present assessed value, which is higher than what I was originally quoting, is $597,200. So the assessed value is now upwards of almost $600,000, and we have an appraised value at 467.
Go ahead, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But that's self-defining. You can't know that somebody might have had an interest in it for $422,000 unless you drop the word minimum, because they're not going to bid on it then. They're just going to figure that it can't be responsive. The only way you can know that there's a possibility that maybe we overshot the appraisal is if you state the appraisal number and people respond, and if they all respond under it, then you have reason to question whether the appraisal was legitimate. Otherwise, you're not going, you can't just assume that if nobody puts it in that number, that they're, they're going to submit something sub that if you're telling them it's a minimum amount, you can't bid otherwise.
Mr. Waystack, then Mr. Powells, then Mrs. Anderson.
Last comment, Mr. Chairman. There are a number of values in a property. As chairman of the Board of Assessors, of course, there is the assessed value, there's an appraised value, there's an emotional value that's always attached to any particular property that someone has. The only value that is any someone's effect whatsoever is market value. And the only way that you get to market value is putting it out. And if you put something too high, as basically we saw with the first go-around with West Harwich, you get a bit of a dollar. You know, the second bid went out, and you had three bids. All were reasonable. And I think you can do this, you can put minimum bid of appraised value, assessed value, whichever you like. But if you state that the assessed value is, the appraised value is, and then you solicit bids, you will see the true market value of that parcel. If you put it as a minimum, I think you will scare off a lot of potential bidders.
We definitely can blame our assessors on the high assessed value. But like I said, maybe we do bring this back in form of, Joe, I can give you two criteria where we could lessen the value of the appraisal. One is the conservation restriction, and two is the age and shape of that building. I mean, I think that those are two weighing factors on why it might be worth, worth less. To Julie's point, it's two acres walking distance to Harwich Port. Joe, go ahead.
In response to some of the previous comments, but not the immediate previous comment, I thought I heard the board ask me, as your chief procurement officer, so certified, what the best practice was. And my response to that would be, the best practice is as I've indicated, we have an appraisal, and we have an assessed value. To the further discussion, however, and the chair's immediate points do get to that, we can also entertain evaluative criteria that talk why the town would consider and value higher respondents that do something for the community.
Thank you. That gets, that gets to one of my concerns. Go ahead, Mary.
That plays right to what I wanted to ask, is could we put something in there like we did for West Harwich Bell's Neck, that press prints or highly advantageous was if they did the historic preservation, and then I think we even had something in there about housing on the second go-around. Could we put something in there to that effect? And it sounds like you just said we could.
Certainly, we could do things like that. You could also say things about if the proposed reuse of the building is meant to invite the community, if it's meant to enhance the residential aesthetic of the area, there's any number of things we could do. But for the best practice, I need to be directed by the board as to how you want that, that RFP to be set up. So we can, we can talk about those other elements, and we can talk about the different statements of value, but really, what, what I'll be tasked with, and then what you folks will be tasked with, is evaluating everything. The dollar amount that comes in, and what they tell you they plan on doing with the property. So we can construct it in such a manner, and that's why I do think it's perhaps advantageous, if not next week, to give staff a moment to be more thoughtful about this, and certainly to reach out to the inspector general's office for, for guidance in that. Because we do want to send it out once, we want to send it out complete, and we want it to come back and be as most advantageous to the town.
Thank you.
However you describe that as possible.
We aim for two weeks?
Certainly.
Thank you. Any further questions? Given, given the hour and how long I thought this meeting was going to be versus what it actually is, I'm going to jump down to old business. We do have a caller on that wanted to speak on this tonight. So we are bringing back discussion and possible vote to reconsider the 5-0 vote of approving the following 2022 weekday and Sunday entertainment license for Lucky Labrador, Inc., DBA Perks, 545 Route 28. Last week, as you all may recall, we, we voted on their entertainment license. The entertainment license application mirrored the year before, the 2021 license, and that was for live or recorded music with amplification and dancing, ambient music and/or TV. One board member had asked that this get put back on for discussion and possible revote, so I put it back on. And that was the, the reason for that was because we have been going to acoustic only in other restaurants in Harwich Port. So, Mary, I will open the floor to you, and I think we can have conversation before we do the motion to reconsider.
Oh, okay, so don't make the motion.
No, I think we have general conversation. If we still want to do it, then we'll make the motion to reconsider. Otherwise, we'll leave it alone.
Very good. My only reason for requesting the motion to reconsider is I wanted to have it look exactly the same as their next-door neighbor. The Perks and the Port are right on top of one another, and I felt to be fair to both restaurants and the neighborhood, both should be worded exactly the same. I thought we did that last week, and when I got home and looked at it, the wording is just a little different, and I think the Port's wording is just a little clearer. So that's why I brought it back. I fully respect what Perks has done to try to work with the neighbors. I know they've brought in those small speakers on individual tables. I know they've been very receptive to working with people, so it's in no way a negative on them. It's just trying to make sure they've got the same rules as right next door.
Thank you, Mary. Sarah, are you still online?
Yes, I'm here.
We have not voted yet. I'm doing discussion first. Sarah, did you want to make comments? I know we had a brief conversation today, did you want to address the board?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Just identify yourself for the record, I'm saying Sarah, like everybody knows you.
This is Sarah Powell, and my husband, Taylor, and I own Perks.
Thank you. Go, go ahead.
So, yeah, no, I mean, I just wanted to say that we did put in a speaker system, we spent a lot of money on it, and we do work really hard to try to keep things copacetic with the neighbors. We're not trying to have, like, loud breaks or anything like that. We most likely would end our music at 9:00 PM anyway, and we certainly wouldn't do it every single night of the week, so, yeah, we just hope that you guys will vote to pass it. It's the same license we've always had, it's nothing new, and we went last year without a violation, so that's really all I have to say.
Thank, thank you, Sarah. Larry, comments?
No, I agree with Mary's comments. I actually thought we were trying to be consistent in that with those stores, and I don't think it affects what they're doing significantly, anyway.
Julie?
No, I agree, I agree with Mary, your comments.
Don? Go ahead, Mary.
Sarah, I just want to make sure you understood my reasoning for that. It's no negative on your operation whatsoever, it's just trying to be consistent between you and your next-door neighbor.
Mary, I do understand, but I don't think that we should be punished for something that our next-door neighbor did. I believe that it's been made clear that all the licenses, in fact, don't need to be uniform, and, you know, whatever they're doing doesn't matter to me. I'm concerned about my business, and I know that to take away that amplified music is going to make a big effect in our business. If people can't listen to amplified music, they're going to go somewhere else and listen to it. They're going to go Dennis, they're going to go to Orly's, or they're going to go wherever there's amplified music. And it doesn't always mean live music. Amplified music is also our speakers.
Thank you, Sarah. You all set, Mary?
I am.
So my, my only comment is that I don't believe that we need to treat everybody the same. I think we need to base it on behavior, and this particular restaurant has, basically per our recommendation, added a sound system, a house system. This dial, this goes back to the noise containment committee in one of their recommendations. So they've made a significant investment on a house system, they've made significant investments on shade umbrellas to block the music, fencing, and, you know, one, one thing she said tonight was that they'd be willing to close at, stop it at 9:00. But we're, we really are punishing somebody, and I sat through all of those sane hearings, and the neighbors had individual complaints about individual businesses, and then one of the takeaways was people that were willing to work with them. And, and I think that this establishment has shown that they're willing to work with the neighborhood, and I feel like we're punishing them for good behavior. After we made recommendations and, without it being in order, they did it on their own. So I, I'm not sure, you know, Harwich Port and music is enjoyed by a lot and hated by some, and, and the hated by some is based on things that got out of control, and we've done a lot as a board in, in reining that in. Thankfully, the police, police department has also done a lot. We're emphasizing our liquor regulations, and, and again, my position is we are punishing a business that has shown to do exactly what we've asked them to do. Go ahead, Don.
Just for the sake of discussion, wouldn't they, if we left it the way we voted it, aren't they still subject to the same noise regulations that we were subjecting everybody to?
Absolutely. If they make too much noise and the police department's down there, then they are subject to everything that we have talked about for the last year that they would be subject to. So they're putting their own license at risk in its entirety, and headlines and everything else. That's on them, and we have said what we will do. And again, we're voting a license that we voted last year exactly the same, and last year, the neighbor that was spoke of had acoustic music only. So no change, really. We voted both licenses exactly the same, and I don't think there's anything to preclude the other applicant from coming back at some point and demonstrating that they're making these decisions. I, I don't, I didn't take this as forever, I took this as the board trying to get things under control, and I think we have. But that's it. So somebody would first have to make the motion to reconsider, have it seconded that we would vote it, and then we would do a new vote on whatever the board wants to put forward.
So to be clear, this is a change to the license, not just a change from last week, but a change.
This would be a change to the license.
To the existing license.
Their existing license in 2021 is exactly what we voted last week.
Since I'm the ugly one that brought it up, I guess if they had that last year and we were okay, I'll let it ride. I don't know how anyone else feels.
Yeah, Michael, I think you make a good argument. Give it a try.
Julie?
I don't have a problem giving it a try, I just think that, you know, in terms of continuity and uniformity, we have talked a lot about unamplified music outside, and granted, they didn't have any issue last year, but I don't think that they had music last year. I could be wrong on that. So, and again, it doesn't matter, because they didn't have any violations, and so that's excellent.
I think the point really is, it's on them, it's really not on us.
I don't disagree with that, I'm just making the point on continuity and the fact that we said, you know, unamplified. And pretty much, I think, I could be wrong, but I thought in any license that came in front of us for outdoor, it was all unamplified.
Only, the only two in the matrix was there tonight, but the detailed matrix was last week. The only ones so far, I believe, were, was Port. Not sure we went unamplified.
The Seal.
The Seal.
Seal and Ember.
So, I don't have a problem leaving it, just making that point. I understood why you're making your point.
Don?
I'm torn. I actually applauded Mary's effort to try to get them consistent, but just like a lot of other places, five, four kids, and one of them was doing bad things all the time, I don't know that I want to punish the other three for the one that was doing the bad stuff. So, I mean, the reason that we changed was precipitated by numerous complaints at both the Port and Embers.
To be fair, I think this board has taken it very seriously, and I think if this gets out of hand, we have no, no option. But prior to the noise complaints and prior to things getting out of hand in Harwich Port, a lot of people loved what was going on down there. A lot of people loved the music, and, and the Powells, I think, have heard very clearly that there's a zero tolerance, and if they're willing to risk their license, that's on them. But I think that they've demonstrated by purchasing the house system that they're willing at least to try things to not exceed the property lines and not to go beyond 150 feet.
Well, that was the first I heard of the sound system. That's not an insubstantial thought. Somebody has to design it, and then somebody has to deploy it, so it wasn't a cheap fix.
So without a motion to reconsider, we're going to go back up. We finished Bank Street, Town Administrator on Expanded Outdoor Table Service.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you'll see in your packet that what you have is a single sheet from the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission dated April 1st, no fooling, that regard, that it talks about the expansion, further expansion of patio service and takeaway and delivery of alcohol by on-premise licensees. You can see that there's a second page, April 7th, with a follow-up by the ABCC, and the resulting checklist or guidelines, I should say, that go with that. Then you'll see the update from KP Law, our attorneys, and their summation of what the governor signed into law. And last, you will see the recommended form that staff has established for a request for continued expansion of outdoor table service. And the reason why we emphasize continued is we understand that the law allows establishments that were previously given that ability to continue that ability. So that's why we're talking about continued expansion of outside. So really, at this point, it's just to make the board aware of it, and if the board has any follow-up or discussion on recommendations, you think, to the form of the process.
Thank you, Joe. Don? Mary?
I think what you did is fine, I'm just shocked that they want to continue takeaway liquor. I think that's, that's just asking for trouble, but I'm, I'm not in charge.
If it makes it home, sealed.
What's that?
If it even makes it home, sealed.
Julie? Mary?
He wants to go across the street.
I want to go across the street, take some away, yeah. I'm fine with it.
Thank you, Joe. Discussion, possible vote to write a letter of support for the Aquatic Center, and I believe it was two weeks ago, maybe it was last week, it's all a blend, we had that young lady in here that was pitching a pool at the community center, and all she's looking for is a letter saying that we endorse the concept, so that when she goes to other towns, she can just show that the town of Harwich heard it and endorsed the concept.
As long as someone else pays for it.
Allows her to do further work. Any board member have a problem with the letter? Don?
No, Larry wants to go swimming after he gets takeout.
He wants someone else to pay.
As I said, as long as someone else pays for it, I'm all for it.
And authorize the chair to sign?
Yes.
So we have a letter that all board members could sign if you'd like.
Okay. Oh, it's already in the packet.
Great.
Joe, you don't need a motion on that, right?
Right.
Do you want a motion on E?
E, yes.
I move that we vote to approve the 2022 Seasonal Common Vicular's License for Sunday School, Inc., DBA Sunday School Ice Cream, 606 Route 28.
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion? Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Discussion, possible vote to authorize the chair to execute the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Grant Award. That is so moved?
Yes, so moved.
Do you want an explanation?
Yeah, could we have a 10-cent explanation?
Well, I can tell you what it isn't, this is not a contract that falls under the authority that the board has granted to me. Your authority to me relates to 30B procurements of $50,000 or less, so then the procedure would be, in this instance, the Commonwealth has a grant, it relates to operations at the disposal area in our DPW, so in order to participate, it needs to be signed according to the state by the chief executive officer, which, as you know, is the board, and the chief of the chief executive officers is your chair.
So this is to?
If we sign all this and we send it in, we'll continue to get money.
Oh, then I'm very happy to make this motion. I move that we vote to authorize the chair to execute the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Grant Award.
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion? Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. We are on to contracts.
Did you skip old business?
No, we did all that.
We already did that, okay. Do you want a motion?
Yes.
I move that we vote to approve a contract with Vanas Hagan Lookslim, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $100,000 for on-call engineering services to include work on subdivision and MS4 permit review.
Second. Moved in second, and any discussion?
Who's signing it?
That would be the entire board.
Roll call, vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Selectman, Town Administrator's report.
So the only thing to report right now, Mr. Chairman, is I have a pending request, and if approved, I will be on vacation next week, April vacation with family. However, you'll see me at one point on Channel 18, because I double-book myself, and I'll be participating in a voter information committee exercise Wednesday morning, otherwise, I was never here.
Did you say next week?
Correct.
So approved. Selectman's report. Don?
Don't have anything.
Mary?
I don't have anything.
Julie?
Nothing.
Larry?
Nothing.
I have nothing. Motion to adjourn? Sorry. Motion to adjourn open session and return to executive session, not to return to open session.
So moved.
All right, moved and seconded, roll call, vote, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.